To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, local Richard?
Here.
Juanita?
Yes.
Richard?
Here.
Ernie?
Here.
Approval of minutes from regular meeting held on September 4th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from regular meeting.
Motion by Adrian to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 4th. I'm sorry, yeah, September 4th. Accepted by Richard. Local Richard? Fourth. Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Adrian's report. Motion passes. Approval of agenda for September 18th, 2018, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for September 18th, 2018.
I second that motion.
Motion by Adrian to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, September 18th, 2018. Accepted by Juanita. Local Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Alright, motion passes. Alright, so real quick, we do have a few agenda items that we're gonna go through hopefully pretty quickly. At that point, then I'll explain the interview option, uh, interview guideline, and then we will go from there. At that point, when we start the interviews, Dennis will take a seat in the audience, and we'll have Sheriff-elect Laverde to help answer, uh, ask questions. Um, tonight's meeting, we are gonna try to keep the flow going, and we do need full attention from the audience. These, especially with, you know, the new drawing, like I said last time, you can hear the little mumbles and stuff, so let's try to keep the media flowing. Alright, so a few, uh, first item on the news is approval of proclamation naming September Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Tracy Masters, she's actually not here right now, but Tracy did email us, she does want us to name September the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Do you have any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to accept Suicide Awareness on proclamation.
I second that.
Right, so we have a motion by Richard to approve the proclamation naming September Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. A second by Juanita. Local, uh, Richard?
Four.
Uh, Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Or?
Ernie?
Four.
Alright, motion passes. Approval to change Public Works Department structure. So, uh, this is my request, I'm requesting to split our Public Works Department into two crews. Crew A will be led by Supervisor David Torres. Crew B will be led by Foreman Carl Archileta. And I did believe in including packets, um, the structure of how I wanted. So basically, the first, so we read readers in the middle of the month. The first two weeks of the month prior to reading readers, David would lead one person, one crew member, Carl would lead two. And the reason why Carl gets two at the beginning is because that's when our, um, most of our regular monthly maintenance happens. So he would be doing most of that work with the two crew members. Then we would have a two to three day period of reading of readers, the last two weeks of the month. The two that were with Carl would go with David, and then the one with David would go with Carl. And then they would, um, you know, switch obviously to do the work. Uh, we're still, when it comes to emergencies, we're still an overall five man crew, so in a case of emergency or a larger issue, they will still pull together. It's not gonna be completely split. The two man crews will be responsible for service calls, re-reading, rechecking, uh, readers and basic duties. The three man crew will be responsible for the larger projects, the monthly maintenance, and new taps and streets and stuff like that. So, do we have any questions? If approved tonight, it would start next Monday, September 24th.
Are they still all on, uh, how's their work schedule, are you changing any of that?
No. Seven to five, yeah, it was seven to five. And they would still be on their regular schedule for, um, the being on call. So, it all, that would stay the same.
One more question. Did you tap them about it?
I did. I had me both, uh, Richard and Carl.
Relaxing.
And, yep.
Make a motion to approve the change of the Public Works Department.
Check in it. Alright, I have a first by Ernie. To change the Public Works Department schedule. A second by Richard. Local Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Or?
Ernie?
Or?
Alright, motion passes. Alright, so in order to, um, expedite, expedite, basically.
Expedite.
Tonight's meeting. We move the department head questions to an actual, uh, action item on this. So, there are going to be someone to give you reports, they submitted reports to you guys. If you guys have any questions, if you guys can call them up to the podium and ask questions. If you don't have any questions, then we'll just move on.
I have one question. I don't know if he goes to David, who is the county enforcement. As I make my rounds around town, uh, who is the one that needs to look at that fence on the corner of Akonah and Railroad? At, at the beginning, he put like, walks along, which is the right way of the town. Now he's put like a six foot fence that's almost at the road.
I was about to say, we were just talking about that before, because maybe starting tomorrow, I wanna go, so.
Yeah, I think, um, we'll have to, we'll have code enforcement. I believe that'll be a code enforcement violation. So, well, um, Dennis, tomorrow, if you can have, uh, getting going at the mill that they're filming, they're too far into the works. It's pretty bad. It's probably like, what, six feet?
It's about six or eight.
Yeah, you look at matching the other, uh, houses, it's like, it's way out.
And the thing is, if I may say, if, if you allow him to do that, then the other people can say, hey, please, well, they can do that, but I want out.
It's, uh.
Carrie Madam's.
Carrie Madam?
Oh, yeah. That's way out.
So we'll have a conference.
I didn't have any, I mean, I wasn't having any concern when he just put his rocks there, but now that he put that six foot fence.
The thing is, he never did a one call. We could, we could have, I know we have a utility nearby, and never did we get a one call from him saying that he's gonna be doing this. Otherwise, we would've told him, can't do that.
Right around the north, you got that fiber optic?
Yeah. I just noticed that, uh, this afternoon, that I brought it to Mr. Mayor with me.
Any other question?
That was my question.
I think Tracy just walked in, Tracy, you've already approved yours.
I apologize, it's been twenty years, Mr. Mayor, since I attended one of your meetings. You moved it then. Well, I apologize.
So, he was approved.
Thank you very much for that.
Do you have anything that you wanna give us, or anything, or?
I do, if you can, alright, again, I do apologize. The Torrance County DWI Prevention Program is working with the Torrance County Office of Emergency Management, the Torrance County Domestic Violence Program, the Partnership for Health and Parks Communities, the Town Fitness, and, there's something else. The Independent Newspaper. We will be having the Torrance County Inaugural Suicide Awareness Prevention Walk Run this Saturday, bright and early, in Estancia. And we very much appreciate it. Tracy Masters, Torrance County DWI Prevention Program coordinator. So, a whole lot of folks, including those from the DWI Prevention Program and Domestic Violence Program, are sponsoring and hosting Torrance County Inaugural Suicide Awareness Prevention 5K Walk Run this Saturday, September 22nd, beginning at 7:00 a.m. in Estancia. We will begin at the Estancia Veterans Plaza on Main Street, with opening ceremonies starting at 8 o'clock, at approximately 8:25 a.m. Participants will walk silently from the Veterans Plaza to Lake Arthur Park in Estancia in honor of the twenty-two veterans who die every day by suicide. Suicide is a huge problem, as you know, in our communities. Personally, I know, uh, nine local families who have been impacted by suicide since the beginning of this year. And the registration seat is free. The idea is to raise awareness. There will be signs with different statistics all along the way, showing, um, the percentage of people who consume alcohol before dying by suicide, the numbers and the percentages of our youth who are participating in binge drinking, the percentage of youth in our communities who feel hopeless, and who are experiencing suicidal ideations. Certainly, we don't anticipate we're going to save the world, but if we can promote understanding, increase kindness and compassion, and decrease the stigma associated with suicide and mental health issues in our communities, then we're gonna make our community better for all of us. And again, um, I have invitations in the car once I really leave here, I just kind of bash it out with the invitations. So I have a lot of flyers, and if anyone is interested, I'll be by the door for a little bit. Can I stand for any questions you might have? Thank you so much, and again, I apologize.
Alright, so we're gonna go into the interview portion of our meeting. I'm gonna expand the format really quick, and then we will go from there. So I have two straws here, um, I'm gonna have the candidates pick a straw. The shortest straw will go first. The second applicant will wait outside, probably with Milton. Milton, it's probably hot outside, I don't know if you wanna like, go to the police station and just be around. So, and then I'll give you a call whenever we're done with the first applicant. So, questioning will go down the line with each interviewer, um, asking questions, and each interviewer will also grade the applicants based on a rating sheet that you are given. You have two for one for each candidate. Um, questions from the audience will be a very structured manner. Please submit questions on a piece of paper to avoid the same question being asked. You will be called to the podium to ask your questions, please speak clearly. Questions from the audience will be weighted using the rate sheet as well, and that's on the back of the floor. Questions and answers are limited to a reasonable time. I didn't set an actual time, because I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna set time, but it's just, as long as the question and the answer, as long as the dialogue is going, then, you know, I don't want to rerun them off into our margins. Please be on point and be clear in both questioning and the answering. After the interviews are completed, the rating sheets will be turned in to myself, for the council and the mayor to review. Both applicants are advised to stay during executive session in the event that additional questions may arise from the governing body of the town of Mount Air. The town council is advised to take time to make a decision. If additional questions arise that require more time, the town council does have the option to table the hiring until our review to provide for additional questioning. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns before we start the process? Alright, Sheriff-elect Laverde, who is joining me here at the front? And before we start, I just wanna congratulate you on your victory. I wanna thank you, and I look forward to a very, very strong relationship between the Torrance County Sheriff's Department and the town of Mount Air. So I'm gonna be looking forward to you coming on. Alright, so, let's do this. Cheating. Cheating. Alright, who's gonna take? Alright, so you're first. That's why we're jumping jackets. Alright, so, uh, Richard, if you wanna go and start with question number one?
We have an introduction.
Sure.
What is this man's name?
Juan, if you wanna get out in our direction.
We'd be more than glad to introduce that stuff. Hello, everybody. My name is Juan Reyes. I've been a law enforcement officer in New Mexico for, going on for thirty years now. I have a lot of experience to bring to this town, hopefully it works out for all of us. And I appreciate the town giving me this opportunity to come here and speak to the public and give me my opinions and suggestions on how to improve this agency and make it work for you and me together. I'm married, I have children, uh, they're not children anymore, they're big, send them off. I have a son that's a New Mexico State Police Sergeant, daughter that's the Lewis Border Patrol. My wife works here in Torrance County, she's with their probation department. And my in-laws are all from here, from Torrance County, they live up in Uwe. And Faridewo as well, I've been living up there in Uwe, in Stretland. And I would just hope by all your needs and concerns, that you're there to help too. Thank you.
Yeah, if you see that, okay.
So is it possible?
Sure.
Is this a half second?
Sure.
Alright, it's, uh, the first question will be, uh, how do you define doing a good job as a police officer?
Well, the question, in addressing that, every police officer takes an oath when they become a police officer. It's to serve the public, protect and serve. That's usually been the model for all police agencies. What it also entails is that that officer takes an oath as well, to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state of Mexico, and also the jurisdiction that they're assigned to. In that process, a man or woman makes a conscious, committed effort to dedicate themselves to serving the public. You have to put aside your personal biases, you have to put aside your differences in religion and politics, and your main job is to serve the public. You have to arrest sometimes individuals that you might not want to, but in that timeframe, you're doing and keeping that community safe. So, being a police officer for many, many years and working in various jurisdictions, I've had that opportunity to serve that public and to maintain that integrity and morality. Because once, we all know with all the stuff that has happened over the years, we all know how the police have been attacked by, by various groups that are anti-police and promoting violence and so forth. Well, everybody has a right to protest, but nobody has a right to hurt another individual. Protecting your property, protecting yourselves, protecting the community you serve is what makes a police officer. And those police officers must maintain those above all. In emergencies, when you have to deal with everybody, sometimes it's not a pretty segue to these, uh, calls of service that we call it. They're violent, sometimes you might have to take individuals that you know into custody. But in the process, you must maintain your integrity at all times, and it's a difficult task. We wear many hats, not just police officers, we wear many hats. We're social workers, we're doctors, we're out there in, in crime scenes or accidents trying to treat somebody. So you, you really have to encompass what you believe in, and you have to work with communities in having the trust. And that, to me, is the biggest, biggest importance, is having the trust of the community that you work for. Because without that, you have no mission. And the mission for the police is to serve the public. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Mayor? Go on.
What do you see as your duties in working as a police officer?
Duties, I understand that this position requires a work in chief. I have no problem with that. I've been used to working the crazy shifts, the day shifts, the night shifts, the graveyard. I have no problem with that. As I explained, being a police officer, you have to work out in, in different environments. You have to work in, in the cold, you have to work in, in the heat. That's all part of your duties, because that is what it's required and overdue. And, and that's what the public expects. And I have no, no problem in doing that, it's going out there and meeting the public, meeting the individuals that I'm gonna be protecting, and giving them the service that they're entitled to. And that, that, that's what they need, you can't deny that. And I really am a strong believer that as a police officer, I take my responsibilities and my oath very seriously. And to me, being a police officer is what I've made my life commitment. That's what I trained for, that's where my education comes from, and all the training that I received is for that purpose, is to serve the public with.
What do you see as a drawback for becoming a police chief here in Mount Air?
I, it's kinda, well, it's kinda a different question. I don't think there is a drawback, Mayor, I think it's a challenge. And I believe that if you have the desire to serve a community, and you have the desire to make that commitment with the community and give them the police service that they request, I don't see any drawbacks. The only drawback that I would see, to be honest, is budget. It affects everybody. Not having enough money to buy maybe some equipment that we need on, on the city, not having any money to do certain training. But there's, there's ways to circumvent that. There's hundreds and hundreds of grants out there that the police can apply for. Through the federal government, the Department of Justice, through the state, uh, DWI grants is one of them, OBD grants, uh, to do traffic enforcement. So there is a way to circumvent the negative. But the most important thing is having the town leadership behind you and supporting you to do those efforts to provide the community at large the services that they require.
So, Juan, how do you think most people would describe you? Uh, and not close friends or family, but other people?
Or my enemies.
Or friend of these.
Or friend of these, my enemy is my enemy, my friend. I would say, in all honesty, you, you really have to be honest with yourself. I'm a very honest person. I'm a very, um, giving person, very compassionate person, I really believe in all that. And it comes from my experience as a police officer in the years that I've done it. I would say that a lot of people see me as a, as I see myself, very dedicated individual, very motivated. I will not do anything and ask officers to do anything that I myself cannot be myself. That is one thing I've always strived on. I will help anybody that needs my help, whether they want to or not. I'm very diplomatic, I've been put in situations where you have to make decisions that were life and death situations. I've been in situations where there was a danger to myself and to others. But I forgot all that and said, what am I here for? What is my job? My job is to do the public good. But as a person, you sometimes have to put that aside, and you have to look at yourself and say, can I do this? What type of, how can I improve myself? I'm always open to suggestions, I'm open to open criticism, and I'm open to a lot of ideas, because I might not know everything. Sometimes my wife tells me that I think I do, and I argue with her, and she argues back. But that's life. I see myself as, as a good person in general, that I'm there and I will help anybody that I can possibly help if they want my help. I will never turn anybody down. And, and I think with, with those attributes, are those attributes that I've given to my son and my daughter in their law enforcement career, and tell them, hey, you're here to serve. If you don't want, if the day it comes when you feel that you get so cynical about doing this job, is the day that you hang up your hat and say, I'm done. Because now after that, you're no good to anybody, including yourself. So I really believe, I'm a very dedicated person, I'm a team player, very motivated, and a very compassionate person. My enemies might not agree with that, but that's okay, I could be a thing as well. We're not all perfect. Thank you.
So if you find yourself being a mayor to convince him to hire you, what would you say if he asked, why should I hire you over the other candidates?
Fair question. Well, I believe when I applied to this job, that I had the qualifications that the town was looking for. I also believe that I didn't waste my time and I didn't spend twenty-seven plus years in law enforcement deciding whether I wanted to be a cop or not. So I know what I've done. I prepared myself in those twenty-seven plus years in training, a lot of the training that I went to, I had over two thousand hours of advanced training. I paid for it myself. When I would go to my chief and say, I wanna go to this train, they said, too expensive, you can't send you. I said, well, can I take vacation and can I pay for it? There you go. I was willing to do that, and we know as law enforcement officers, sometimes that happens, but that's not your fault. I have put myself in that situation. I've trained myself, I've accumulated all my experience, I've accumulated all my training, and I put everything into part for this type of opportunity. I am near retirement. When I retire, well, that will be my decision, because I'm not ready. I wanna give back to what other communities and other opportunities that are offered to me have given to me. So I wanna give back. Another thing is, that I can state is that everybody has a goal in life. And one of my goals was, before I retire, if I had had that opportunity to go out as a commander, to go out as, as a chief, then so be it, if that opportunity was offered, and it is being offered today. And I believe that based on my training and experience that I have done, it has led to this day.
This question is, thinking about your life over the last five years, in what ways have you changed, or what dynamics have impacted your views of life, people, and work?
Good question. Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm good on that. Five years, interesting that you say that, because that's what I've done as an individual. Every five years, I'll, I'm always looking, where am I gonna be in five years and what am I gonna do? In the five, last five years, I've seen myself grow and come to the point that I have all this experience that I've talked about and the training that was given to me, and I wanna use it. Like I said, I'm not ready for retirement. I still got a lot of years ahead of me. And, and thank with the grace of God, I'm in good health, in good shape, and he's gonna proceed with that. I have learned how to deal with people a whole lot better in these last five years, because as we get older, we get more compassionate. Sometimes, sometimes we get too grouchy, sometimes we might get too upset at these, but that's okay, we're human. But I've learned how to manage that. I've learned how to deal with people better because of the training that I've had and the experiences, the experiences that I've also encountered. So that has brought me to this point, and that has brought me that every five years, I'm always looking for change. And I've been very fortunate in the, I wouldn't discuss my sixty-plus years, I would say that, that I had good mentors, I had good people that, that saw something and say, hey, who's gonna give you the opportunity? And I took it, and I ran with it, and I did very well. But at the same time, all that doesn't mean well if you can't get along with people, and you can't treat people with respect. Because respect is earned. To me, it's a very big thing, and, and that's why I always try to instill in my children, even if they're older, right, they're thirties right now, I'm always instilling them, be respectful, be diplomatic, but always, always do your job. So all these, all this stuff has made me who I am today. This is my five-year time at this point. This is my five-year time at this point in my career. Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about a si- situation with most communities where people could make a change to improve the community.
Well, changes are always good, but sometimes people resist. People don't like changes. I've been in situations where I was given opportunities where I could change something through my efforts and through working with others. That's very important, because you can't always do it by yourself. You need help. I had a, a situation in helping a community when I was with the Albuquerque Police Department. I was assigned to a task force. This task force consisted of rebuilding a community. Albuquerque, if anybody knows, knows a little bit about Albuquerque. Albuquerque is a sister city to Chihuahua, Mexico. Well, as we all know about Mexico, we know that in the days, there was a lot of corruption. There still is, but it's not as bad. During this period of time, I had the opportunity to work with Chihuahua. Myself and several other officers went down to Chihuahua and rebuilt the infrastructure from ground zero with the Chihuahua Police Department. We took apart their police department and rebuilt their patrol division, their detectives, their training, their supervisors, their command. Right, it took us over three and a half years, and I recruited from the departments and various other agencies throughout the state. I recruited commanders, I recruited consul people, elected officials, to go down there and give them the information on how to rebuild their infrastructure and then work. And currently, when we left, Chihuahua Police Department in Mexico is a small version of the Albuquerque Police Department. It has all the divisions that you could think of, helicopters, tactical, motors, and we started from the ground. We started with the officers, because that is the key. They fought us, they fought us hard. The mayor was supportive, we fired the corrupt officials, but in end, we were left with a professional police department, where they took our Western ideas, they took our mythology, they took everything that we brought to them. We took equipment that we didn't need, that they needed, and we helped them, and we rebuilt their policies, their SOPs that were non-existent, and we put it all together. And when we left, we left knowing that this department could provide public safety to that city. To this day, it's still going, and we get requests to go down there as consultants, to go and teach and bring our mythology from here and our current law enforcement practices down there. And I've been doing this for over thirteen years as an instructor with the U S State Department, going to foreign countries and rebuilding their infrastructure and police departments to make them more professional.
Name the three most important things in your life.
God, family, and job. Thank you.
Do you have any special skills or experience that would contribute to this position?
Absolutely. As I stated in my opening, I am an instructor, a certified instructor, that I've worked many, many years to get. I teach and instruct use of force all over the state. I'm also an instructor where I can train other instructors, I'm a trainer instructor in dealing with the mentally impaired, which is referred to here in New Mexico as H B ninety-three. I go to many cities as a consultant, and I teach the officers those particular. Those type of courses are also required by the New Mexico D P S as biennial. Officers have to be certified a year beyond that. Cops had, had to do the biennial stuff, but in order to retain our licenses, we have to do that. I'm an instructor in tactical, a certified SWAT instructor. I am an instructor in homicide with a specialty in gangs. I was a gang detective for over seventeen years with the Albuquerque Metro Gang Unit. I hold right now certifications as a first-line supervisor with the D P S, the New Mexico D P S. I hold other tactical K nine, siminations, scenario-based, so I can go on to these other agencies and I can teach these officers how to respond to events. I'm an active shooter instructor, certified through the Federal Law Enforcement Academy in Artesia, and I also top those courses throughout the state and through other agencies. My specialty when I was doing all the certification was homicide. I am considered an expert with the Second Judicial District Court on gang homicides. Actually, you all probably remember, this is going back several years, maybe ten years, the Torreón murder cabin. Is everybody familiar with that? I was the co-lead investigator that broke that case when I was assigned to the New Mexico State Police. That was my case. We took that case, we convicted individuals, we went to federal court, because they tried to sue the Albuquerque Police Department and the New Mexico State Police. We won that, that case. I'm also, had certified in, in my training with various agencies that I've worked with. I solve missing, uh, person cases, cold cases is my specialty. I excel in that, and I have certifications in that. So I bring all this experience to you all. I bring this experience to share, to teach the officers here how to work with the district attorney's offices, that's very, very important. You must understand how they work. A lot of people don't like to be a DA's officer, that's all case, because they don't understand why they do what they do. Cases are very important, they have to be put in a certain format. In order for them to be prosecutable, they have to be, they have to carry all the elements of a crime. And I know that because I was a DA investigator for two DA's districts in this state, so I learned from themselves of what is required to do a successful prosecution case. No, 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 it's okay. Can you hear anybody hear me now, as they say, is that Verizon or Sprint?
This is a two-part question, so I'll just go one question at a time. First, what are your strengths?
My strengths, I believe, lie in, in my ability to lead. I'm not a follower. I've gotten in trouble for that, working for other agencies, because I always questioned things. But I've been given the opportunity to be a supervisor as well, so I understand both sides of the house. My strengths lie in my determination and my motivation. That's what I believe in. Other people might not, but that's what I know. My strengths come from within and through my Christian faith, because with that, you can do anything. And that is where I get my strengths from.
Now, the second part, and it's hard for everybody, is what are your weaknesses?
Weaknesses, everybody has them. I like to smoke a cigar every once in a while. My wife hates it, and drink some whiskey or something. That's one of them. But my weakness is, is what I believe is what you make your weaknesses. Everybody has something to contribute in, in this world. Everybody has something to offer. I always try to inspire, I always try to, to move. That's where my leadership skills come in, because I'm one of those persons, I, I can motivate people. The weaknesses come if I give up. If I give up, not trying. That's where I see my weaknesses at.
So how would you handle a personal conflict with a fellow officer?
That's always going to happen as a supervisor, it's inedible, it's, it's going to happen. I've had experience as a supervisor when I was with the Albuquerque Police Department. I supervised twenty-five detectives when my sergeant decided he wanted to be a lieutenant and go on to school. He said, here you go. So that was my first supervisory job. From there, I'm ex-military, I was a staff sergeant with the U S Army, I'm a veteran, got to more, to, got to supervise more individual, younger kids. So I do have supervisor experience, and I do have experience in resolution of issues. The way you address them is you have to look at the total concept of that person. What is the issue that's being addressed? What is the problem? Is it a violation of the standard operating procedure? Is it a violation of law? Or is it just a personality conflict? You have to look at all that before you even say anything. You look at the individual, you look at their record as to how they have produced. Are they a good officer? Are they a problem officer? Or can this officer be helped by your intervention? So what I do is I sit down with these individuals, I explain to them the problem that's at hand, and I give them the opportunity to defend themselves. I do not make prejudgments, I do not accuse them of everything, because everybody has a right to defend themselves, especially when they're being confronted. So by doing that, I, I get the information from that employee, because it might not just be that this individual violated a simple infraction or an SOP, but maybe there's other underlying factors, maybe he's having problems at home that we're not aware of. Maybe there's something that caused this to act, and this is their way of acting out. And in essence, they're reaching out to you and saying, help! I give them the benefit of the doubt. And it's one thing as a supervisor that I have learned, is I always tell the officers, be honest with me, tell me the truth. I can work with the truth. I can help you, but if you lie to me, you're on your own. Because then that is a show of, of that individual not having integrity. And integrity is very important in this field of work, because if your integrity, you give it up, you will never, ever get it back. So that's how I deal with a problem. I give them the benefit of doubt, I investigate it thoroughly before I make a supervisory decision. That way I have all the facts that I can act, because in the process of disciplinary, we are subject to tort claims. So if I make a bad decision based on my personal bias, or I just don't like this guy, we are going to pay somewhere down the road if this individual says this was unfair, I was targeted, or anything like that. So you've got to be very, very careful, and that's why it's always good. Sit back, listen to what they've got to say, evaluate, make your assessments, and then make your determination.
All right, I got a good one.
Oh, okay.
All right, you're conducting a speed enforcement in Mount Air. You stop a vehicle for speeding. Approve the vehicle, and you discover the driver is your buddy. Relative or a close friend? Would you give the driver a ticket?
Yes. If I'm going to do the job, and I expect my officers to do the same thing, you've got to do it, that's what we're there for. And sometimes mom and dad and everybody's going to get mad at you, but just say, look, I just prevented you from an accident, because that's what traffic citations are, is an accident that did not happen. Look at it that way. You're welcome, sir.
You come to work, you stop by your feet deep or something. In doing so, you run into a fellow officer. As you come in close contact with the officer, you smell what you believe is alcohol on the officer's person. What do you do?
I would be very, very disappointed. I would take that officer, and I'm going to explain the process, because I used to work internal affairs in, in an agency, so I'm familiar with these type of complaints. The first thing that you've got to do with this individual is ask him point blank, have he been drinking? And see what they tell you. The next thing you have to do for tort liability claim is you have to get this, this individual and get him to submit to a B A C, which is a D W I, uh, breath test. If he or she blows, and they're reporting for duty under the influence of alcohol, you immediately, after you verify that that individual has alcohol on their breath, you must, by law and by ethics, you must remove that individual from duty. You put him on suspension pending an investigation, it's what we call the administrative investigation. You gather all the facts from this individual, you notify the, the town leadership of what you had to do, because disciplinary is disciplinary. And when somebody shows up to work under the influence, they not only endanger the public, they endanger you. And I will not permit that with any officer, because now they've taken that trust that the public has given us and has betrayed it. I don't care if they went out last night and partied with friends, because whatever. Well, all they have to do is call me up and say, boss, I did some drink last night and I can't come to work. We'll work on that. Yeah, there'll be some reprimand on it, because now somebody has the cover for that individual. But in legality, to prevent from this town of having to suffer a liability, you have to act. And by acting, you protect him, you protect the town from liability, and you protect the agency, and the integrity remains with the department. They took action instead of sweeping it under the rug and saying, oh, nothing's going to happen. Oh, yeah, something will happen. That's a major, major violation. A lot of officers in this state have lost their jobs because of that. All you have to do is read, and then you look at what administration is going to do. When they do the right thing, and sometimes it comes down to termination of that employee, if it's not the first time, and it protects everybody, unfortunately. Everybody makes a choice. We're all adults, and I expect the officers to be adults, and I expect them to be professional at all times. That I would not tolerate, or drugs for that.
Give us your thought on having to take someone's life. If you are ever forced to use that level of force, will you do it?
It reminds me of a question that was asked of me when I began my, again, my law enforcement career on my interview board. They asked me if I, at any point in my lifetime career, would be able to take the life of a human being. It's a very hard question for an officer. I've investigated officer-involved shootings, I've been in some situations, and fortunately, I've never had to pull the trigger on a human being. Very close, very close. But do I have to? As a law enforcement officer, I'm required. I have to protect myself, I have to protect the public, and if that individual poses a danger that meets the criteria of endangering the public, themselves, and others, and I do have to shoot that individual, I will not hesitate to protect the life of other people. It is not a glorious situation to be in, it is not something to brag about, because it involves your actual in committing a homicide. It is not something to brag about because it involves your actual in committing a homicide. And you are subject after that to a very, very rigorous investigation by the DA's office because they're actually charging you with a murder. And you have to justify it based on the fatality of the circumstances that you have, that you had no choice but to take that person's life. It's unfortunate that sometimes these individuals place officers in that position, but that's part of carrying the badge and being a law enforcement officer.
Traffic enforcement is an extremely important part of police work. In saying that, do you believe that every traffic violator deserves to be cited for their violation?
No. Actually, traffic enforcement cuts down crime. It is one of the most deterrent enforcement actions that the public sees the most. If you cut down, if you enforce traffic laws, you're cutting down in crime because you're preventing other things from happening. Now, the individual that's getting stopped might not feel that way and might use all kinds of foul language against you. That's okay. You smile and you inform that public that what you did is exactly here. You're not gonna argue that factor out in the street with them. That is for the courts. You tell that individual that why you stopped him, why you had to give him the citation. And if they wanna argue and they feel that you're wrong, and sometimes the officers can be wrong, we're human. You go to a court of law and let them determine the facts there. That's where you argue, that's where you present your case. Traffic enforcement is one of the most viable tools that a law enforcement agency has because it is one of the most highly public contact that you're gonna have aside from answering calls of service. Traffic enforcement is very, very important. It not only promotes compliance, it brings in revenue to the town or to the jurisdiction. But there are warning citations that you can issue that is an officer discretion. Some agencies prohibit that, but it is up to the chief of police and the town leadership on how they wanna address that. But to me, if you can get somebody to comply with a warning citation as opposed to an actual citation, or just a verbal warning, and that person understands you, I don't think you're gonna have an issue after that. So, no, not necessary. You don't have to give people tickets all the time, but as long as they comply, then you've reached your objectives and you've met that goal.
Perfect. So that concludes the questions that we had. We are going now into the questions by the audience. And if you, so maybe the question, you wanna read your question, raise your hand so I know that it's your question, okay? Okay, perfect. So that's pretty much all of them. Real quick, I'm gonna have a question from our superintendent. Her question was, we happen to have an SRO, a dedicated SRO, and in the event that she's out, how do you see, how would you get coverage for her? Now, we are limited, just so you're aware, extremely limited. But how, what would your thought process be on getting some, if she's out?
I'm assuming that the SRO works the hours of the school, which is normally, what, eighty-four, something like that?
She works, yeah, seven-thirty to four-thirty, and we have four school days. We're a four-day week.
Well, that's where your coverage comes in on your police patrol schedule, four-ten, as I'm aware, that's what currently is in place. You have to have an overlapping coverage. You must have that when you have four-tens. The other hours, eight-hour shift, twelve-hour, you can't do that because you need the personnel to do that. Four-ten is good for this type of agency. If the SRO's gonna be out for sick leave, training, or some emergency, then that responsibility lies on me. I'd be the first one to say, "Okay, I'm gonna cover you." Aside from my other duties I'm gonna be doing, I will cover. But by having an overlapping shift, an officer that's already on duty, the day shift officer, and having somebody else come in, you might have to call an off-duty officer and say, "Hey, I need you to come in and cover for these next two days or three days." And they will adjust your schedule to compensate because you don't wanna wear out the officers because they, everybody's on different shifts. So you always have to have options. But that responsibility ultimately lies with the supervisor, meaning the chief, to make sure that the schools have that coverage. That's very important. SRO program is an excellent, excellent program. If we can get the young kids trained to respect law, become well-abiding citizens, we're not gonna have them in our later time as offenders living in our community and preying on us and stealing your property. So if we start at the school with a good SRO program, then we're reaching our objective and our mission. It's very important.
Okay, so I'm gonna call on any of you. If you wanna come up to the podium, you can, or if you just wanna talk from where you are, that's fine as well. If you need your sheet, I can give that back to you. Sonia, okay, I'll be.
If our community had a ministry...
Uh, real quick, sorry, I just wanted to...
I'm sorry.
Just remember your question kind of as you say it because it's gonna be the exact same question you gave the other officer candidate, okay?
Okay. If our community had a ministry house that housed known criminals and known alcoholic or drug addicts, how could the house, the residents, and the community depend on support from you and your officers?
Very good question. I've dealt with individuals in situations like that in other jurisdictions. We have to talk. We have to get with the director of that program and say, "Look, this is what you have. This is what I can provide. As long as your clients are abiding by the rules and regulations of your house, as long as your clients are obeying the laws of this town," because I'm sure we would have individuals from other jurisdictions, and they might not be familiar with the town laws and ordinance system. We would give you a list. We would tell you, when they come in on their intake, this is what they have to abide. They have to abide your rules in order to fulfill the court requirements, the conditions. If they violate those rules, then they're gonna deal with the police, and that violates the whole protocol, the whole thing. They go back to jail. That doesn't serve purpose for them. By working together, we can eliminate those problems because we have to. They're in our community. They have to respect the individuals that live in this community. This is not a community to come in and do crimes just because they want to. They have to respect the laws here. And I think if they're doing that, and they have a clear understanding, and is the director of that ministry, I don't see a problem. You just gotta talk to each other, you gotta work with each other. And then you go on from there, and you address the problems as they arise. Because you're always gonna have the ones that test you. Does that answer your question? You're welcome.
Add one, please, sir.
Sir, are you a current certified New Mexico law enforcement officer?
Yes, I am.
When's the last time you arrested someone? You yourself put handcuffs on them, did the paperwork, booked them, and took them to jail?
Six months ago.
Okay, and that was in New Mexico?
In New Mexico.
All right. And your handcuffs, they have rust on them or they're oiled?
No, they're oiled and clean. My gun doesn't have any dust bunnies.
All right.
I maintain my equipment.
All right, well, that's a big one with me. I like to see if folks have warrants, I like to see them get arrested and face the judge. And I think that's an issue in this town. Want to answer, you might as well get the folks who, a judge has already found that they need to be arrested, I'd like to see them gone.
Well, as you know, as a law enforcement officer, I'm assuming you're still with the Len Police?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is one of the big things as being a working chief in an environment such as this. You're gonna make arrests. That's not a problem with me. You have a warrant, I can't change that. It was your option to go to court and you failed to appear. Now you gotta see the judge in handcuffs. Not my problem. I have to execute, the individual's going to jail. I have no issue with that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You had one more question, Ed.
Right.
It was, in New Mexico, officers prosecute misdemeanor cases. Have you yourself, have you ever done your own cases?
Yes.
Officer prosecution?
The police officer prosecution program started back in the early nineties. We all had to go through training. It's still in effect. I had no problem prosecuting my own misdemeanor cases. I know how to present it. I know what you need to say, how to testify. Big, big, big thing on testifying. That's one thing that a lot of officers mess up with is the testifying. The evidence that you have to produce, your criminal complaints. I can prosecute a case for misdemeanor, and I've also testified and got positive results conducting major felony crimes, homicides, violent crimes, and so forth. So I'm very familiar with the system and the requirements that you need to get a good, successful prosecution and what it requires, what the judges need to convict and the penalties associated with it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Jack Benner?
So a lot of people I talked to had drug dealers living across the street. How would you address the issue of dealing? It's a small town with a big problem.
With that, it's pretty much the same aspect. What we used to do when we had an issue in a particular neighborhood, it's what we call saturation patrols. We would saturate a certain area that had, that was plagued by problems, and we'd put more patrols in there. And we'd stop everybody. Of course, legitimately, we weren't just gonna harass people, we used probable cause. When we suspect that there's an individual that's selling narcotics, it endangers the community. It puts the community at risk. It puts you at risk. Because they're getting individuals coming in from other jurisdictions to come in and buy drugs. For example, I worked narcotics, major narcotics crime at the Albuquerque Police. I was assigned to the Region One Task Force. Guess where I was working most of the time that I was doing narcotics investigations? Right here in Torrance County. I was hired to come into Torrance County, and for a whole year I was undercover and not even, the only one that knew of my existence here was the sheriff back then. So I was a Torrance County Sheriff Deputy, and that's what I was hired for. I'm very familiar with Mountaineer. I'm very familiar of who's who. Now, take that and add the other experience that I've worked. I was in FBI Task Force, working gangs and narcotics. Guess where I always used to come? Right here in Mountaineer, from Albuquerque, Estancia, Las Lunas. We went everywhere.
We still have the problem.
Well?
Where have you been?
I've been here. Addressing your question, first thing we have to do is we have to identify those individuals. Find out if they're on probation. Because if they're on probation, guess what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna call their probation officer and say, "This is what we got." Get them involved. That puts the pressure on them. When they know that they're being looked at and that the cops are not gonna just blind eye, and their parole or probation officers are calling them up for drug tests and saying, "Hey, we're getting these calls. What are you doing?" They're gonna take a second look and say, "We don't wanna be here in Mountaineer. Let's go. Let's go do our drug dealing somewhere else." One of my proposals on that issue is to have means with the sheriff, with Marty when he gets elected. Sit down with the sheriff and use the resources they have and work together. Also, sit down with the state police. They have a lot of resources. The feds, DEA. DEA's been here many a times, you've just never seen them. But they're here. ICE, all these agencies. The way you do that is you network, you talk to them. Working task force, I know what they're looking for. So if I come to them and I say, "I've got a major drug problem in our town and we need help. What can you do for me? Can you send me some agents? Can you give us some grant money where we can bring in additional officers or have them come in, whatever?" That's how you combat crime. Has anybody ever heard of the broken window?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you have. And all the cops have. You leave that broken window, you don't replace it, there's another, and it keeps going and going. Drug problems is like that. Drug dealers are like cockroaches. The raid only works so much, and then they get used to it. So the way to do it is you start going after them personally and revoking their right to be out and violate their conditions. That's the only thing they understand. Because when they have to go back and do time for the time that's left, they don't wanna do that. They'll just pack it up and go. And that's where you bring in all your resources and work with the sheriffs, the state, and bring in the resources. Because once you're doing that, you're showing them that you're not gonna tolerate this. Because out of drugs comes what? Burglaries, violence. A lot of people have gotten killed because over drug deals. So that's how I would address that. Did I answer your question, Ed?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then we got, I believe, two final questions. I'm gonna read the question and then I believe we have one more? Do we have one more? Okay. How do you see our town overall, and what do you think you can do to improve it? What are your goals? And if you can give some examples?
Okay. I had the opportunity to go over the twenty-seventh, seventeen Mountaineer police audit that was done by the DA's office. Very good information in there, a lot of good findings. What I did is I drew up an outline, and I'd be happy to share with you after the meeting. And I drew up these outlines in this audit that addressed the issues that have been plaguing this community. And a lot of these issues are very easy to fix. Some are gonna take some time, I am not gonna lie to you. It's gonna take time because it hasn't either been implemented or there's just hasn't been some funding or planning to maybe do it. But it's a very viable option for us. One of the first things that I would implement as your chief would be a community watch program is to get you involved. You need to help me so I can help you. End of story. That is my mission. Without your help, anything I do, anything town leadership wants to do, without your answers up, it's not gonna work. Another example, I've done it before, community policing, I taught that subject in foreign countries to command staff people to show them what powerful a community can be when it stands up together. Very powerful. I would also implement another program called Coffee with Cops. You'd see me sitting down at the diner, and I'd be talking to each one of you. Ask me questions, tell me what you need. You've been here, you know the issues. Let me know about them so I can address them, so I can help you. And together, working as a community, I think that is something that we can do. I'm from New Mexico, originally Texas, but that's a long time ago. I was born there, Antafo, sorry. I was Antehanua a long time. Hablo español muy bien. The thing is, is that I've learned how to bring people together. I'm one of those persons in describing my strengths, this is. One of my strengths is bringing people together. I'm a people person. Talk to me, I'll listen. Because that's what the community wants. You want somebody that's gonna listen to your concern and opinions because they do matter. And in community policing, this is where we started. We have to start somewhere, and it starts with you helping me make my mission easier. Traffic enforcement, you're gonna see it because it's gotta be implemented. How you deal with crime scenes when you have violent crimes? You guys have been subject to some horrendous crimes here. Sheriff's Department has some resources, but who do we have to call? You have to call state police because they have the resources, and that's who you would see here, is the state police crime lab. I have very good rapport with these individuals. I teach at the academy. I teach the crime scene processing. So I know what they're capable of. And it's all free. All we have to do is pick up the phone and say, "I need your help." Manny knows that. If he needs help with a situation, he does the same thing. The help is there, but we have to help each other first. It has to start with you all. And that is one of the major things that I strive for is the community policing. Everything else in addressing in this audit, equipment, uniforms, grooming standards, are all gonna be implemented. The most important... The most important thing here is that we have, how we have to operate is an SOP. As I understand, is there been any?
We have one now.
You have one now? Ever-changing.
Yeah, ever-changing.
Ever-changing. Why? Because of laws that change. If our SOP is vague, we'll suffer. But if it's good, it's a good SOP on how to run this department, then we consult with our attorneys and we make sure that those regulations, those policies are in line because that's how we can get in trouble. Because it affects not only the department, it affects the town leadership and ultimately you because if there's a lawsuit, it's you that's gonna pay that lawsuit. So we have to look at the whole picture. My whole concept is taking this audit and improving it where it needs to and getting the help and working with you, the community. That's where it starts. That's where I'm at. That's where I'm coming from. I worked this area as a deputy. I worked as a Task Force Officer. I have family here, so I have a stake here. And you are my stakeholders, everybody here. And together, I think we can do this. But I need your help.
And then we have one final question.
Hi, I'm Rita.
Hi, Rita.
You've had a lot of burglaries, a lot. More than a lot. More than we ever should have had in the first place. And I'm trying to... The question I need to ask is because, is based on what you're talking about, a community, let's work with what you're telling us that you would like to do. We have a very closed-lip community. A lot of, everybody's related to everybody, and so nobody talks, even though they don't recognize that if you don't talk, your children, your children's children are being affected by that decision. So my question is, how do you work with a closed-lip community to get a Community Watch program that is effective? Because they've tried that before in the past, and that has not been effective. So, and I realize as a police chief, if you were in that position, that is not totally your responsibility, but you would be a major part of that. So what could you do for that, to help that type of situation?
What I would do different is take the personal approach. I'd go and talk to the offenders themselves. I'd make them know, this is what's gonna happen if you continue. These people have a right to their safety. You have a right to public safety. And I would confront them. That's where I would start, to let them know that there's something that's gonna happen. Where the Community Watch program comes into play is when they start seeing people, their own relatives, being involved. And they're gonna start thinking, well, why are you getting involved with them? You have to change the mentality. That's the first thing. Yes, tight-lipped, that's my cousin that you're talking about. That's my uncle. Well, your uncle is affecting everybody. And if he doesn't address that himself and nobody tells him, then how you expect people to change? If people don't tell you there's an issue with you, how do you change? By being more personal and talking to the family members and saying, look, Grandma, look, Uncle, your son is doing this. And he's continuing to get into problems. And the public is getting fed up. So you have two options. Cooperate with us, help us, help, let's get help for him, however way doing it, or he's gonna suffer the consequences. It will be our duty as the police to enforce that. There will be cases brought against them. And whether they're related or not, it's gonna come down to that. And sometimes that's the last resort. But you never stop because everybody is savable to one point. Criminals the same. They might be bad in front of their friends and all that, but when you get them by themselves, they're just as susceptible to anybody else. But that's where the intervention comes. You lay down the law. In town, we're not gonna tolerate this anymore.
Well, it gets frustrating for you as a police chief and your staff if you're not getting success for the, because it's very tight. I mean, I've never, I have been a lot of places in my lifetime, and I have never seen a community as tight-lipped as Mountaineer, New Mexico. We have become a sanctuary city. We are known as a sanctuary city, town for criminal activity. And so it's a drawing people in. And so it's gotta be frustrating if you can't. So how do you keep your staff employed in terms of not getting involved in that stuff, but allowing, but still keeping them, helping them to stay focused too? That is the goal, to get that Community Watch.
In police work, I have found that you get frustrated on a lot of things. And you start blaming people. Start blaming the DA's office. One, you're not prosecuting my case. Well, we had to drop your case because your case wasn't good enough. If you build a good case against an individual, which would be my priority, and you present that to the DA's office, it doesn't matter what the families are gonna say. That individual's gonna pay for their crime. But it starts with building a solid case. I've had grandmothers in my lifetime, the experience as an officer and investigator, where I've had grandmothers and moms and dads use the term loosely, rat off their individuals. When I'd laid the law and say, look, this is where I'm at. Your son committed this crime, and I have solid evidence to put him away for a long time. You don't wanna tell me where he's at? That's fine, I'll find him on my own. But let's work together to help you so that way he doesn't hurt anybody else. There's always options. Family is family. I understand that. But when a family member is hurting their own family and others and putting them into peril or jeopardy, as a human being, if you talk to them as a one-to-one person, forget I'm the police chief. Talk to me as a person. You would be surprised that people will help you or may know the difference between right and wrong. And if they don't want to cooperate with the police, that's not gonna stop my officers from doing the job. They're gonna continue. Because that is our job, to protect you, regardless of what the family members don't want. Because they're also part of this community, but they also have responsibilities to this community themselves. I mean, all of you here have families that've been here forever. Don't tell me that if somebody in your family was committing a crime that you're gonna not say nothing. Maybe so, but that depends on that person's integrity. But then when it comes down and that person's going to jail, are you gonna be there to bail them out? It all depends, doesn't it? I think in those issues, they're very delicate. But as a chief, I'm not gonna negate my duties. I will go as far as I can legally. I will bring in resources to help this. And if maybe they're on probation, talk to their probation officer. Say, look, we're having a problem with this guy. He's causing problems. Maybe they can help us. There's always something. But you have to give them the opportunity. Before they, as they say, before the hammer comes down. Give them that opportunity, but don't tolerate it. When you tolerate crime in a community, you're letting everybody know, come and commit a crime in Mountaineer because we don't care. No. When they start finding out that Mountaineer's not gonna tolerate this anymore, they're gonna look somewhere else. That's where we come in and talk to the sheriff, talk to the other police chiefs in the other towns and say, okay, let's get together. Let's do a roundup of warrants. Let's pick up everybody, family or not, here we come. That's what you gotta do. Unfortunately, but that's what you gotta do. Does that answer your question? I'll work on that.
It's just a tough, it's a tough community.
It's very tough. Being a law enforcement officer nowadays is getting even tougher.
As beautiful as this place is, there's a lot of tough issues that the police force has to deal with. And I'm glad we have a new mayor to help.
Done a very wonderful job, this whole council.
Very caring about what needs to happen.
I've researched your town. I've gone over two years of agenda, meetings, and everything I can grab. And I've seen the progression of what Mayor Nanto and his staff wants to do for this town. And this is the beginning. All we need is that opportunity.
Thank you. Back into the interview. Thank you. During, we're gonna bring Tony in in a minute. We'll have him do his interview. During that time, you can go with Milton. Just so it can be fair, you know, I don't want to...
I haven't talked to him in a while.
I don't want to, we have ten minutes. Well, we're gonna take a quick ten-minute break so that way you guys can stretch, grab some drinks. Do you consider moving?
You know what, I'd rather stay out of it.
Yeah.
Unless they want to arch my hand. The back of my head.
All right, so let's go ahead and begin the second interview. This is Anthony Webb. You go by Tony?
Tony.
Okay. Tony, if you don't mind, tell us a little bit about yourself and where you're from, so that you know about Mountaineer. Kind of like, this is a great introduction.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you. That was a king. Anyway, well, my name's Tony Webb. I've been fifty-eight this year. I've been in law enforcement. Actually, I've been a police officer for thirty-five years, about thirty-five years. It all started one day in the small town of Denver. So, well, I'm originally from Santa Fe, New Mexico, and born and raised there. And then when I turned, when I graduated high school, I exited. I left the Denver and never came back, never turned back. In nineteen eighty-two, I became a Denver police officer. And that was the month after my son was born. So I've been up there forty years. And the reason I went to Denver was I got a, I went to school for automotive training, Denver Automotive and Diesel College. So I was a mechanic for a while, so I did that work. And so every time I get a job in a police department, it seems like I always end up being the Mr. Goodrich because I know about the cars. I don't wanna work on them, I want to tell you what's wrong with them. So, but anyway, I have, I'm not married. I have a son that's thirty-six years old. He lives in Rio Rancho. He is the Assistant Director for Child Support Enforcement for the State of New Mexico. So he lives in Rio Rancho and commutes to Santa Fe every day. He went to CSU and got his master's degree and all kind of stuff. So he did really well. He's done really well. Proud of that boy. And I stayed up there and I became a motor lieutenant. I went from reserve all the way to motor lieutenant. I was on motorcycles for six years. I did narcotics. That seems to be my, between traffic and narcotics, that seems to be my favorite. I can, I don't know why narcotics just seems to follow me. I don't know how that happens, but it just happens. Then I became a chief of police in a small community, a little bit larger than this. They lost their police department only because the police department that they have was doing some shady stuff to the point where the Department of Justice came in and shut them down. So when I took, and they never told me about this. See, this is the nice thing about this job. And so when I, when I get the job, and they did what they would, similar to what you guys are doing to me. They would put me in front of the community for the interviews and stuff like that. And then when I got the job, they didn't tell me I was gonna have three entities of the federal government knocking at my door. So I had the FBI, then we have a CBI up there, and the Department of Justice. They're all knocking on my door for past cases that they wanted to get to know. Plus, not to mention the District Attorney's Office was there too. So I got a rude awakening my first, my first chief's job. And I made it work. I told, I held them off at bay for a couple of months, got them the paperwork and stuff that they wanted to do. I mean, it was really serious to the point they were gonna shut it down again because they didn't want that department to go on. But I convinced them that this was not the way it was gonna work, that my department was gonna be different. And they wanted to know how different. And I says, well, I don't know yet, but I know it's gonna be different. So I was, I hired, I had, my first hire was a sergeant. So I had to get that done. And so it was just the two of us working the city. And so by the time I finished, by the time I finished the hiring process, I had eight officers. I had four full-time and four reserves. And the reserves are great because I had to pay them. All I did was just furnish them a uniform that was done. They work, they work once a week. And that helped a lot with the... It wasn't a twenty-four-hour town. I mean, we had a couple of bars in town. But as soon as they closed down, we closed down, let the sheriff take the rest of it. But the issue that I had when I went there was, it was so territorial that nobody got along with anybody. I mean, we, that Highway Fifty corridor between Pueblo and Lamar, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, state patrols on there. You had one sheriff's department. Actually, Pueblo Sheriff in Lahana, or not, Otero County. And then I had Manzanola, Rocky Ford. But nobody, nobody talked to each other. Everybody was just so territorial. So I was dispatched out of Rocky Ford, which I had to pay twenty thousand dollars a year for. And I had a really small budget that I was working with to begin with. So I had to update the cars. I had to update the equipment because nothing fit the insurance purpose. You know, the insurance standards were, nothing would, nothing would fit. And the problem that the town had was they had a problem with trying to figure out, they would only give you like seven thousand dollars a year for maintenance on the vehicles. And if I had a challenge, I says, you know what? These cars are way too old. They don't even fit the insurance purpose now. So with the help of the Denver Police Department, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, the State Patrol, I got new equipment for everything. And it was all, it was all donated to me. I didn't have to buy anything other than the three cars. So Denver Police gave me, sold me three cars for twenty-one hundred dollars. I had a friend that outfitted them for five hundred dollars a car, radios, decals, everything I needed for five hundred bucks.
You couldn't live in Denver?
I live in Aurora. And so anyway, that ended. They, and then I got hired in Taos, New Mexico. My mom, I was gonna go to Afghanistan. And then President Obama canceled that out. And so my brother calls me and he says, I think there's something wrong with mom. I go, what's going on? He goes, I don't know, there's something weird going on. So I come down here for a weekend and she opened up to me. She said that State of New Mexico given her a letter that they needed to test her. In that testing, we found out she had Alzheimer's. So now I had to change, now the whole, my whole life just changed. So I figured, I really don't wanna go back to Santa Fe for anything. See, how close can I get without getting involved in the family politics? So I got to Taos. I got hired in Taos. And the problem with coming into a new department is that a guy like me has so many years of experience that everybody's kind of afraid to touch you. And if I had to tell them, look, I'm here to learn. I don't know anything about New Mexico law. Just teach me. And so I went through the FPO program, got through it. And I loved that job. That was a great job. Next to Denver Police Department, that was the best job I had. And the guys were great. Everything was, we had a lot of camaraderie in that department. But the commute back and forth to Denver and having to deal with two households was just killing me. So I had to just stay in Denver. So I, so that thought, well, now I got the airport. So I can go from Santa Fe to Denver, or from Albuquerque to Denver, and still be in Santa Fe within an hour. So I can do what you want. But now I'm having to be down here every two weeks. So I thought I need to get something closer. So that's what Mount Air is all about. I saw the advertisement for chief here, and now I'm here. So there it is. I'm not married. I, uh, have a few things up in Denver that, that keeps me there, that's why I stay there. And, uh, other than that, that's, that's what I got home.
And is this given property you are really gonna come out?
Oh, sure. Unless we got a helicopter that can bring you back and forth every day. You got mic for life?
Alright, so let's go ahead and jump into questioning. Um, so the way that the format is, is basically we go through the question, the lead-up, and then we jump into your resolution.
Okay.
How do you define doing a good job as a police officer?
When at the end of the day, you go home. That's the main, that's the main one right there. But when you come into a situation like this, and you have more good, uh, ad boys than, than complaints, you've done a good job. And to prove it to you, when I took over the chief's spot in, in Fowler, their caseload in June of that year was twenty-five, and that was just twenty-five cases that the sheriff had responded to. None of them were closed, all of them were open. By the end of that year, now this was, now this is, no matter, it, it, it's kind of a negative, but it's the very big, big positive for the chief. The caseload, I closed out the year with a hundred and eighty cases. So what does that tell you? People were starting to respect and actually respond to the police department, and they actually trusted you. So they were not afraid to call you. That's how you, that's how you get that.
What do you see as your duties in working as a police officer?
Both to preserve property and to save lives. I mean, your, your main concern is to make sure that everybody has a bed to go home to. You gotta, you gotta make sure that the person that you went on the call for is, is taken care of one way or another, whether it's a domestic, whether it's a child issue, whatever you have, you gotta make sure that everybody's taken care of. And then, uh, if you got an arrest, you got an arrest. If you have, if you can do a lecture and release, then you do a lecture and release. But it's all up to you. You still have that, as a police officer, you still have the, they haven't taken that, that ability away from us to make our own decisions. So as long as you, as long as we can keep that, I think, uh, maybe you can see it's starting to go away a little bit. Starts off with the cameras, okay? The cameras, because everybody has a camera, whether it's, whether it's on us, on us, or it's on your cellphone. So that's, the judgment calls are always, are always questions. So as long as they, we can keep that, that dialogue going where we have our own, still our own mind to make up a decision of what's, what's in the best interest of the community, then you're fine.
What do you see as a drawback to becoming a police chief here?
Well, I mean, it's just not just here, it's, this is nationwide. You have over thirteen thousand five hundred police departments in this country. Everybody's going after the same guy. That's the problem, is that the same guy doesn't know if he wants this job. Especially in the, in the job market that we have now. The only time people turn to the police department is when there's no jobs out there. But now that we have this great economy, nobody's looking for cop jobs. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta pull them away from somewhere, and you gotta make sure that you can keep them. It's not only getting the guy, it's actually retaining them, and making sure that they're happy, because retention is ninety percent of the job. Because not only is it police chief, you're trying to keep the community good, you're also trying to keep council good, but you're also trying to get that police officer to think that he's, he can count on you for something. And so, and if he can do that, and if he can show some kind of a role model style type policing or chief, you, you'll keep your guys. But what I found in the state of New Mexico though, and I put a, I went, I went to a class a few months ago, or a year ago, I should say, and I put together a PowerPoint. And what I found out in this PowerPoint, it was this absurd, it was the emotional stress of a police officer. And in this, in this PowerPoint, I point out that as soon as you get the call from whomever, whomever calls you for whatever, because remember, the guy, the guy you're gonna get, the way, the only reason you're gonna get him is because he, you're the first phone call. That's it. That's the difference. And so the emotional stress, you know, your life starts to change from that phone call all the way to the end. And so what I, what I found out in the state of New Mexico is, I saw some guys like down in Deming and that area in the south part of the state, were out there these classes. These guys are jumping ship. One guy's making, he's making like sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour for like, and he's been on the job for like ten, twelve years. And he's gonna throw ten to twelve years away with one department for a dollar fifty an hour more. And I, I just, it blew me away. And that's, that's, that's the hard fact in this state, is there's just not a lot enough money to pay the police officers. Not even state police pays that much, when you come down to it. So, retention, number one, you gotta get the guy, number two, you gotta retain him. And how you do that, that the other part of that is, you know, we all dang, we all, uh, we all like shiny stuff, you know? You know, dang a little shiny stuff, so what, what do cops like? They like toys, right? And the police cars won. So I made this, I made this, I made this a point in the, in the PowerPoint. I said, "It's really embarrassing when the car you drive as a police officer is worth more than you make a year." That's the part. And that's the part where everybody's light just went on. How do we change that? That's what you guys are there for. You know what, though? Even if you bought the cheaper cars, the, the stuff that, that keeps the car running, keeps the police officer running, you brought up a good point. You still have the electronics that goes with it. I mean, the radio system alone, that's, that's a big chunk out of the budget. So.
Um, how do you think most people would describe you? Uh, not, not those friends and family, just in general?
I don't know, that's a good question. Hey, you know what, I, I would say that I'm a fair person, I'm a nice person until it's time not to be nice. And then, uh, I'm jovial, I'm happy, I'm a good guy, and I don't complain a lot. Like, you know what, life is a gift. I would see it that way. And if I was to be as, and I, yeah, I'll tell you what, the role, my role model is my son. Because I looked at him, I looked at him, and I, and I, you know, everybody says, "Oh, you did a good job." And I said, "You know what? I wish I could be as cool as he is."
If you find yourself meeting with the mayor, you've been since hired, you, what would you say, if he, uh, "Why should I hire you over the other candidate?"
Because I'm better looking. I have all my hair. No, I just have a lot of experience both in small towns and in big metropolitan cities. I, I bring that with me. And I can go from the smallest town that I've worked in to, uh, a tourist town that has a lot of people on the weekends, to a metropolitan city where you get a lot of crime. You get a lot of good people too, but most of the, you know, most of, most of the job in the big cities is just jumping call to call. You never really get to, you just go from call to call. You're ten to twelve hours just going crazy. But yeah, but I bring that. And I've worked all aspects of the police department. I worked patrol, I worked traffic, I worked vice narcotics, I've been a, I've been an investigator, I've been a sergeant, a lieutenant, and now a chief. So I've done it all. And I do go back down to patrol. And I've been a reserve, and I've done the job for free. So there, I have a, I think I have a good repertoire, as they say.
Thinking about your life over the last five years, in what ways have you changed or what dynamics have impacted your views of life, people, and work?
People are just crazy, man. I'll tell you, you know, in the last five years, there's been a lot of changes in this country, number one. Uh, number two, we're just so divided as people. It, you know, you can't even talk to somebody about something without, everybody's, uh, just wants to go down your throat with something, right? And, uh, I've been watching that, and I look at the way we used to be, and God, I wish I could just go back to the sixties when gas was twenty-three cents a gallon, and you could have a hot rod and not worry about it. But I, I think as I'm getting older now, the thing that I see changing is just my perspective on life. Like I said, life's a gift. You just gotta take care of it. And, uh, my life has changed, no doubt about that. Who would ever thought that I was even gonna be a house cop for a while? I thought I was, I was set for Colorado the rest of my life. Who'd ever thought my mom was gonna get Alzheimer's? I mean, that's changed, that, that was a life change right there. So my perspective on life is just keep it, keep it, keep it good. If you have a, if you have a higher up that you pray to, pray to him, because that's, that's, that's where it is.
Tell us about a situation in most communities for people to make a change to improve the community.
Well, the change comes from whoever you have representing you on this work. Um, that's, that's part of it. Who, you have to look at your vendors and your, and your people that you bring into the city. You know, the problem that, I mean, I never had an opinion on this, whether it was right or wrong, but when marijuana came into the state of Colorado legalized, I thought, "Well", you know, everybody talked about the money it was gonna bring in, and small towns like this just thrived on it. In fact, they had an expose between the Tana Raton, New Mexico and Trinidad. One has marijuana, the other one's losing itself. So, you know, if, if there was something about that, I mean, you gotta just keep, you gotta keep, you gotta keep track of who you're bringing into the town. Because one person can change everybody's life. One person. And you just gotta make sure that one person is. And if they're good, reward them. If they're not, try and get them out as fast as you can. But, uh, no, it's, uh, you just never know who's gonna come in town, that's all. I'm, I just gotta, I, I would imagine the professional people that work here in the city, they don't live here, do they? They do? Or do they live in the county? They live town? Alright, okay, I was just wondering.
Name the three most important things in your life.
Um, my son, I think is number one. Even though he's thirty-six years old, I still, I still look at him, I still, I still look after him like he's my ten-year-old. I mean, he'll call up with an answer, with a, I always wanna be that fixer, you know what I'm saying, with him? Like, he'll call up with a problem, "Okay, I'll go right there to fix it." And I need to just pull back. The second thing, I think, would be, uh, God and country. God, 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 family and country, how's that? Those are the three things.
Uh, do you have any special skills or experience that would contribute to this position?
Other than being on the job for thirty-five years, I think the other special skill is that I have sold real estate, so I have real estate, uh, background. Uh, I've been a member of the church up there for a long time. I taught cate, I taught catechism to the kids for ten years. And, uh, I've also did, I've also done some, uh, you know, the other part of, of being a police officer, and being a chief of police especially, is that you always, there's always changing trends, the trends are always changing on us. And the one thing that never seems to go away is the officer's safety issue. At the end of the night, all my guys have gotta go home to their families. That's my main concern. So I gotta go to school to learn how to keep them alive, number one. And I gotta send them to school to show them how they can stay alive, number two. The third thing that I have noticed, that if you send these guys to a funeral, that is a hard impact on people. Especially if it's one of their own. I went to the Dallas, you know, we, in Denver, we were always getting killed. Uh, Dallas was a big one, Five Guys in One Night. Um, I went to that, and I'll tell you, there's this one impact, that's the impact. It's trying to see, just put your shoes in wherever the family sits. That's a tough place to be.
Um, again, this is a two-part question, so I'll ask it in two parts. Uh, what are your strengths?
My strengths are is that I can, I can develop, I can develop, uh, training suggestions, I guess is what the thing is, I can do, I can be the developer of the training. I can also carry it out. If not, if I can't, I'll get somebody else to do it. I can delegate, that's another one. And number three, I can, I can speak for myself.
And the second part of that is, what are your weaknesses?
I can't say no for some reason. And that just drives me nuts, because I know I need to say no. But I'm always the guy, like, I'm the, I'm the guy on the phone, and then somebody will walk in my office, and they'll sit down, and then they'll start asking me a question, and I'll be answering the phone here. And I'm that guy that can multitask, and only because you've done it so many years in a police car, between the car radio, the regular radio, calling people, talking to people, listening to the radio and all that stuff. So you can multitask, that's the other, that's the other strength that I have, is the multitask. But I'm like, I, I just, I hate it when I can't say no. "Can you do this?" "No, I should say, no, I can't really." And I'll say, "Yeah, all right, I'll get to it." "Okay, and I do, I get it done, but I should've just..." I'm in the middle of it, I says, "Why didn't I say no?"
Okay, how would you handle a personal conflict with an A-person?
Personal conflicts happen in every job, only because, especially in police work. When you're an A-personality, an A-type personality, and you're trying to manage an A-type personality, that's kinda tough. So you have to figure out, one of the schools that I went to, it was a hundred and twenty-hour school, it was called LPO, Leadership and Police Organizations. And it was basically based on the, uh, the Crash Unit in LEP. And, uh, Crash meant, Crash was the, the gang unit. That's the other thing that I, that I did in Denver, was five years in the gang unit. I hated kids after that. I just, I didn't wanna see another kid as long as I lived, man. I says, "Golly, the paperwork is just forever on the list." So anyway, um, I went and trained with Crash, um, back in the eighties. And, uh, Crash means crime resistance against street hoodlums. Well, in their South Central District, they had a big problem with, uh, police corruption. And so they needed to figure out a way to how to cure it. Well, number one is you have to change, you have to change the paradigm with the police department, number one. Paradigm has got to change. Because if it doesn't change, you're gonna continue with the same thing over and over again. You guys have heard, they created, say, "You can't be doing the same thing over and over again and expect a different outcome." Well, that's what they did. So they did away with Crash, sent a few, a few guys away to prison. And, uh, but the problem, but the issue was, you have to get along with these guys. And you have to figure out a way to figure out where your strength is, where their strength is, and then work on that. Because if you can work on them and, and tell them where they are as far as life, maybe sometimes you just gotta tell a person you're stupid, you know what I mean? If you can't help them, you can't help them. And I'm not the one that's gonna go, you're the one that's gonna go. So if we can't make this thing work, we're just gonna find you another place to go, that's all that's true.
Alright, you're conducting a speed enforcement in Mount Air. Stop a vehicle for speeding. You approach the vehicle, you discover the driver is your mother, or a relative, or a close friend. Would you give the driver a ticket?
Probably not. I mean, you still have, I mean, you got, you're the one that's gotta go home and deal with this stuff when you're done with it, man. No, it's not gonna happen, unless you don't like the relative. But, uh, you know, it's, uh, that's where officer discretion comes in. Where, where do you like your life?
Okay, let me, let me change my answer.
You come to work, you stop by the PD for something. In doing so, you run into a fellow officer. As you come in close contact with the officer, you smell what you believe is alcohol on the officer, persons. What do you do?
Well, in another time, you probably just yank the badge, suspend him, and tell him to go home. That was another time. In this day and age, you gotta work with them. I mean, being, being a good chief is like being a good HR manager also. Alright, now you gotta dig into the problem. Why are you drinking on the job? Why did you come to work on the job with drugs? Or with alcohol or something? And if you can, if you can articulate it, send him into a program and see where he is. I mean, maybe he's going through a bad time at home. I mean, you don't wanna come crashing into his life. You're talking about suicide a while ago. We have a high suicide rate in this profession. And a lot of it comes from family pressure. You don't wanna add to it. That'd be my point. Thank you.
Give us your thought on having to take someone's life. If you are ever forced to use that level of force, could you do it?
Sure. I mean, you're, you're, you're bound by the state to protect your life and the third party. I mean, you're, you're bound by the state to protect your life and the third party. And if there's something that needs to be done, and you need to shoot, that's what you're trained for. That's what this job is all about. You know, when I went through the academy in nineteen eighty-two, there's a good little story. We had a guy, he had just come out of seminary. He wanted to be a priest, but he said, I wanna be, I wanna be a cop person. So we went to the train, we went to the, we went down to the Training Bureau, and we were, we were, we were training on handgun usage, you know, at the range. See, you have to, you have to know the normal nature of the weapon, on and on and on. And back then, we were using six shooters, that's how, that's how far back it goes. See, we didn't, when I got on the job, we didn't even have a domestic violence law, that's how far back that goes. So, after about six weeks of him shooting at the targets, it clicked on him. I'm just not shooting at targets, I'm learning how to kill somebody. And you know what? He couldn't live with it. And the next day, he came in and resigned. Good for him, at least he realized it. Because in this job, it's a split-second decision. And it's not gonna be my life. I got a granddaughter and a kid. They need me.
Traffic enforcement is an extremely important part of police work. In saying that, do you believe that every traffic violator deserves to be cited for their violation?
No. No, there's, I mean, my rule is this, if you're going eleven over, you're gonna get pulled over. It doesn't mean that I'm gonna give you a ticket, I'm just gonna pull you over. And at that point, I gotta listen to you, see what's going on with you. If you DUI, then we're gonna have another discussion. If there's something going on where you're trying to get to a meeting or something like that, maybe I'll give you a lecture and release to tell you going your way. Then if you start arguing with me, maybe you're gonna get the ticket, you know what I mean? So there's three ways you can go with that.
Alright, so that took the part of the questions that we had. Now we're gonna go into the resident question. The first question, and we're gonna do the exact same questions that we did with the last candidate. The first question comes from our superintendent of Mountaineer Public Schools. We currently have an SRO, and she's stationed up at the high school, but she does go to the grade school. If she's out for sick or any type, anything like that, what are your plans to make sure that there's coverage at the school? And we are limited for getting coverage for her at the school.
I mean, how imperative is it? I mean, that's, that's why, I mean, how big's the school?
School, we have about two-hundred students, I would say.
Alright, so how imperative is that? I mean, do we always have problems at the school that she needs to be there all the time? I mean, if she calls in sick, I mean, can it sustain one day? A second day, maybe I could take over. A third day, maybe I could get somebody else to take over. But my police department's very limited, is what I hear. So it'd probably just fall back on me.
And then the second question comes from the audience, and that is gonna be Sonia.
Hi, my name's Sonia.
Hi, Sonia.
If there was a ministry house in our community that housed known criminals and known alcohol or drug addicts, what kind of support could the house, the residents, and the community count on from you and your department?
I guess I don't understand the question. Are you asking, are you asking, let me see if I can figure it out now. Okay, if you're gonna have past criminals, alcoholics, or whatever else in this house, are they there for the night, or are they there to, to report, what are they doing?
They're housed there, so it could, let's say, we-
Like a halfway house?
Kind of.
And so they're registered with somebody?
They would be.
Okay, so I would know everything about these people, as their own crew? I would just have to, just make sure, just make my rounds maybe once a day? I don't know about the community, what they would do, but, I mean, my part of it would be just the police inside of it. I don't know if that's gonna answer your question. I mean, it's gotta be.
Your answer's kinda vague, if you don't mind my-
No, that's what I'm saying, my, that's what my answer's gonna be.
Right, because I, the question was, what kind of support could the ministry house and the residents of that house and the community count on from you and your officers?
Well, I mean, as far as policing that, I mean, we could police it, but if, I mean, if we have to figure out who's gonna be there, what kind of criminal we have, or what kind of addict of some sort, we have to figure out what that is, and then I could say, I don't know. That one's a tough one, because I really, I mean, we have these halfway houses all over Denver, so, I mean, the sheriff controls that, so we never, I mean, we never dealt with that, so I don't know. I couldn't answer that truthfully, what it would be. Other than me going by and checking you out every once in a while, just to make sure everything's fine. Make sure that they weren't causing trouble in the community too. That would be it, yeah.
Sir, my name's Ed. Are you currently a certified municipal officer?
I am.
Alright. And it's up to date?
It's within, yeah, within the two years. All I gotta do is just get my bienniums and that's it.
A biennium, and then you'd be good to go.
Yeah.
When did you make your last arrest, where you made an arrest on the spot? Or worked up an arrest warrant like God?
Probably six months ago.
Alright. And then I have one more question, and Peter has it.
Yes. He wrote a few, and he doesn't remember the last one. In New Mexico, officers prosecute misdemeanor cases. Have you ever done your own cases?
You know what, in Tous, we didn't.
Did you have a city attorney stand there?
Yeah, the city attorney did it, yeah.
So here, mag court, you prosecuted your own cases, the misdemeanors, except for domestic violence and-
DUI. DWI.
DWI. So would you be prepared to do that?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, like I said, we, I, when they told me that, that I was gonna have to prosecute my own cases, oh, what? What the heck's that all about? You know, because I'm from Colorado, man, I mean, everything's nice and neat here up there, right? And so I come down here, and it's like the wild, wild west. And so, I mean, no, really, because I mean, where did, I'm-
There's almost no other state where you do officer prosecution.
Yeah, but officer prosecution, now my two, my two brothers and my two nephews, they're police officers in San Jose.
Yes, sir.
So they told me all about this stuff, I says, what the heck's going on there? And so they said, alright, so then I'm going back, it's alright, now I gotta school up on this stuff. And then right when I did that, they said, no, city attorney's gonna take it, we're done.
If you're hired, you can do it yourself here and in town, but also.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Uh, Dex?
So, a lot of people I know tell me they have drug dealers living across the street. And how would you, if you want, we have a drug problem down, how would you deal with that?
Yeah, I was reading some of the minutes when I was working the other night, and I go, so it's like every other town, you know, we had a big heroin problem in Tous. We don't have that much meth up there, but it was a big heroin. And now I hear it's like number three in the state of crime, so it's like, you know, these drugs are just, we didn't have the time to do what we needed to do up in Tous, because we were just going call, call, call. We're only two-man shifts, sometimes three for a lucky. And that was terrible, because, you know, up there, the sleeping population's like sixty-nine-hundred, and then you have the daytime population, which is like fifty-thousand, right, because everybody's coming in to do their stuff. So we never had the time to go and do these knock and talks, or whatever, to talk to people about, you see if you have probable cause to go into the house? And if you can find probable cause to go in the house, then you go in the house, and you get rid of the junk and arrest the people. But yeah, I mean, I mean, there's one night up in Denver, we did, we did twenty-five warrants on twenty-five houses at the same time because of drugs. So we did it, we got it all done. But the way to do it, though, is being, I've been in drugs for a long time, is you gotta know who is who, what are they doing, and who's bringing the, who's muling the stuff in? Are they cooks? Are they self-cooks, or they bringing it in from Mexico on that side? So you gotta figure all that out. And then, the other part of that would be, alright, so now we have, you were asking me one time, what do I know about Mountview, or Mountaineer? And the actual answer to that is, I really don't know a lot, because the only time I was here when I was a kid, I had an uncle, we had Uncle Tommy. He was a sergeant with the state police, and he was stationed here. I don't know what he did wrong, but whatever it was, it must've been bad, because he got stationed in this area. And, no, 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 it was like, I don't mean it like that, but I, I remember him saying that, that he screwed up in one of his, in one of his, one of his deals, that they sent him here for something. Now, I don't know if this had a district station at one time or not?
Yeah.
It did, right?
Not bringing men back.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, Uncle Tommy, he brought us into Mountaineer and we talked, he looked, I was like seven or eight years old. Tommy Holder, is anybody old enough to know that name? Anyway, he was a sergeant with the New Mexico State Police, we called him Uncle Tommy. So anyway, but I don't even know what I was getting at. I forgot. Oh, the drugs, so anyway, he was an narcotics guy. And so, in fact, that was my first introduction to narcotics, because he was an narcotics guy. He didn't turn me on, but he, he was, he was always into the, into the good stuff, and I just always was so intrigued about how he worked it. And when I got involved in it, it was kinda easy, I liked this stuff. But the, but the, but the key to that problem is knowing where it's coming from and solving it. And then the other part of that is, you need to know, okay, who your region people here in this area are. I need to know who they are. I need to know who the deputies, the deputies is supposed to be patrolling this area with me? And who the state policeman is gonna be around this area? And I need to know where my next cover's coming from. Because if all I got, three or four guys, and I got something down, because I see you have a bank over here, you're out in the middle of nowhere, and I'm thinking, okay, well, that's an easy hit. Where's my next cover from? I don't know. Alright, next.
So we have two final questions, one I'm gonna read, and then we have a final question from the audience. How do you see our town overall, and what can you do to improve, improve it, and what are your goals for the community, and if you can list some examples?
Well, you know what, when I, I didn't have time to drive around in here, but I did have time to look around while I was talking to a police officer. And number one, you gotta get a police department, that's, that's the first thing. Because you gotta have, how's the word I'm looking for? You gotta keep cops upbeat. I'm telling you, we're worse than anybody in this world. That as soon as, we wear our, it seems like we wear our emotions on our sleeves sometimes, and we shouldn't. But all you gotta do is just, to get us down in the dumps, is just take away something from us really quick. And we won't work. I mean, that's always true, it's like, okay, you don't wanna give me a new car? Okay, well then, we're gonna run this one into the ground. And you know what, there's departments that do that, I mean, there was a, there was a sheriff's department up in Colorado that, I mean, their cars are so old, that these guys, the steering wheels were coming out of the steering column as they were driving to these places at high speed, compared to going like this. And so how do you work for somebody like that? I mean, you only work for it because you need the money, and then you're afraid to go somewhere else, because you don't want them to badmouth you on the whole thing. So you gotta, you gotta keep the, you gotta keep, what's the word I'm looking for?
Morale.
The morale up, yes, thank you. You gotta keep that morale up, because cops are the first ones to go down in the tubes, man. We're a bunch of old ladies, I'm telling you. We just don't, we don't take it right to change. Change is hard for us.
And then our final question from the audience.
We have had an awful lot of burglaries, more than we should have ever had in this community. In fact, our community has become known as sanctuary town for criminals. So if we were to put together a-
Neighborhood watch?
Neighborhood watch. We, part of us, huge part in Mountaineer is that everyone is related to everyone, and so nobody talks about any, anything that's going on. So how would you see yourself, where would you see yourself, and how could you help that situation?
Okay, when I first, when I first got to Valor, to be the chief, I knew that I had a big wall to break. Number one, they didn't like me because I was from the big city. They thought that I was gonna change their total lives around. But what I did was, I started getting community meetings. Once a month, I'd either have a neighborhood watcher, a neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting at the high school. And I would get everybody's input. I would want to know where there was crime. I wanted to know what they thought my officers needed to do, or where they needed to be. Some of the stuff's stupid already, it's just crazy stupid, and I never paid attention to it, but some of the stuff that made sense, I carried it through. And then I went to the community meeting, where the elderly people went. Because those kind of people were, those people had kind of still a stronghold. In other words, if you're the mother of somebody else that has kids in the community, and you're seventy or eighty years old, you, they pretty much respected you. And so I figured that if I could get to those people, and then it triggered, it would just trickle all the way down to them. I would get a lot of cooperation from the community. And you know what, it worked. I was in the community, I was having the community center, always having lunch with them. They always wanted to know what's going on in the town. I would have, I would have the town hall meetings at night for everybody. And then I would have lunch at the high school and talk to them. We had a program at the high school, it's, it was an anonymous thing, where you just dump something into the, into the locker, and go in once a week to see what the anonymous was. We had a lot of junk, but it was, it was, some of them was good. And we cleaned up a lot of, we cleaned up a lot of bad stuff in that, in that community with that. And that's what I would do, I mean, I mean, whether this community would like that, I don't know. But as I would, you know, the problem is gonna be, the only issue that I see with this town is trying to get cops into it. Trying to get people hired into it. Because it is kinda remote. And, I mean, but then he's saying that he lives thirty miles out of city, so if he's fine with that, I mean, I guess we could find other people that live out of this town like that too. But the other part of that is pay. You gotta make the worth, you might've gotta get the commute worth it. And I've noticed that in this state, most of the communities have a take-home policy that goes anywhere from thirty to fifty miles, or in San Jose, it's like seventy-five miles around. Around the police department, so they actually live in Alpharetta, where they can live, then work in San Jose.
I think part of what, part of what we have problems with is with the the police force that we've had in place for many, many years has been that they're not, they're easygoing, oh, we don't need to deal with the, oh, this is just, you're going to this, and so they get away with the traffic, you know, these people get away with the traffic, they get away with the misdemeanors, the little things are going on. And in reality, this community needs a very tough police force going on to get things straightened out that's going on.
Yeah, I've, I've been in one of those departments.
Do you have that ability?
I have the ability, but I've been in that department, and nobody likes that department. I mean, you guys don't wanna go out of your house, afraid you're gonna get stopped just for not putting your blinker on. I mean, I understand, I understand what you're, I know where you're coming from.
Trying to get it under control.
But you need to get it under control, but like I said, there's a time to be nice, and there's a time not to be nice. So if you can, if you can work off of that premise, I think you can come in line with the community. But I've been in that department, and that department doesn't work. Where everything's so hard, like, the thing I tell all my officers, especially nowadays, even, even, even as a policeman, even as just a patrolman up in, up in, up in Tous, I tell these guys, look, you don't have to arrest everybody you come in contact with. You know, you can get away with just doing a lecture and release and get out of it, you're fine. Or taking the kid to his mom and dad's house and showing them what they did. But nine times out of ten, the mom and dad don't care. And I'm not there to babysit kids. And that's the problem that we have nowadays, the mom and dad just don't care. Or there's only a mom that she works all the time, and she can't peek chat with it.
So what's, what's the solution then?
That's up to you guys, I don't know, that's in your household. That's your household, the only thing that I, the only thing I have to do with it is when, well, I have to do something with it when it becomes a law-breaking issue. That's when I come into it. But that's, you know, I don't know, when, you know, when the police officers, when the, when the five police officers in Dallas got shot, the chief of police, the guy was, the guy was great. I listened to him at the funeral. And the guy came out and said, you know what, he'd never, you know, all we had to do was just deal with crime. Now all of a sudden, we have everything put on our backs. And so, yeah, it's up to me to keep the community clean, but at the same time, you gotta keep your own house clean too.
But if you, if, as a police chief, do you think that it would be beneficial for you and your officers and the community to, you're talking your community meetings, but also would that be something that would fall under the police chief to, to help in that direction and giving, helping parents to recognize? And you're not a counselor, and I understand that, but to say, you know, this falls down, you know, if mom and dad are doing this, mom and dad, you know, this is the way you- this is the way, you could handle this, could you be a part, would you be?"
Oh, sure, I could do that.
Is that stuff that, where you have your community meetings, or you get to the schools and you're talking with the parents, that, do you see the police chief?
Oh, sure, because, you know, every time I went to one of those community meetings, it would be, I had a lot of, you know, I had good rapport with a lot of the people, especially the teachers from the high school. And what I found in some of these small communities is that they get very cliquish. You know, and you have, you know, certain parts of some church on one side, you have the teachers on the other, and it goes on and on, right? And so the cliques want to rule the roost, right? And so, but what I found though is, when you get these community meetings, you'll get the praise, but then you'll get the sour parent that didn't like the way his kid was treated because of one of the cops roasting him up or something. So now you got to figure out what happened there, because now it's become an issue. And so the community meeting that I was having, they did bring that out. But at the same time, when we brought him into the office, and we asked what happened with the child and the officer, we found out that it had nothing to do with the officer at all. So that's one part. The other part is, you know, you have the kids that just don't care. They're going to do whatever they want in the community, no matter what. So those are the ones you got to put the kibosh on. Give the ticket to it. Have mom and dad show up at court with them and see where they do it bad. You know, there was one time where this grandparent came in to talk to me. He wanted to press charges against his grandson. Grandson had taken care of the, taken the credit card, and he got charged, it was minimal, it was like $150 with the stuff on TV, or off the internet, one of the two. By golly, he wanted to charge this kid. And I go, "Whoa, hold on, hold on. Number one, it's just a misdemeanor, it doesn't go to the felony part of it." I said, "So why do you want to charge him? Well, he got to learn." I says, "All right, because, you know, once I put him in the system, it's hard to get him out of the system. Sometimes you can't get him out of the system." So if he ever goes for a college application somewhere, or if he ever goes for a private application, this is going to hit his record forever. Until he, no, it just so happened on this one, he was already 18, so it was going to stick with him forever. And so I said, "Are you sure you want to do this?" I said, "Can we call grandma?" And he said, "Yeah, I guess we could." And I said, "Why don't you get grandma in here too?" So we had a, we had a family meeting is what we came down to. And I convinced grandpa that he was not going to do it again. And if he did, we're going to do the charging. We're going to just kind of keep it hanging over him. And if he did it again, we're going to charge him. And so mom was okay with that. And so the kid ended up being all right. Two years later, I get a phone call from the kid. He said that if it wouldn't have been for me that day jumping in for him, that he would have never been accepted to the Air Force Academy. And he was so thankful for that. And stuff like that, it makes you feel good about being a cop. At the end, there was a moment there where we, if you just had one of these linear-thinking freak people that just, "Oh, he did wrong, he's got to go to jail, he's got to get a ticket," whatever it is, the kid may have turned up something different. You may have turned, turned that whole kid's life around to something worse than what it would have been if you had accepted him. So, anything else?
No.
No.
That was the last question.
What would you do in a situation where there's somebody living in an abandoned house that has got an electrical cord plugged into a neighbor's house, stealing their electricity?
Well, that's not the public building.
Wait, 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 and this person is told that he's not wanted, then the house is knocked down that he was living in, and then he threatens to burn down the town. What would you do with that person?
And then he runs into my neighbor's house and steals your safe. He stole the safe and all the equipment.
Hypothetically. Hypothetically, yeah.
Read allegedly, read allegedly, right?
Right. How would you remove this person?
Well, you got to, you know, you got to.
That's not the same question.
You know, there's stuff by receiving.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to allow the question, only because we didn't ask the last participant. So I'm trying to be fair, and we didn't.
Thank you. My mind is going crazy, what could I target with?
So we're actually now going to take a break. I'm just going to go get him, and then we can go on with the meeting real quick. All right, if you two want to take a seat, yeah. I know, we have a tongue. All right, so item number 12, we're moving on. Item number 12, approval to hire a police chief. I make a recommendation that we table that until after executive session. So if I can have a motion?
I make a motion that we table hiring a police chief until we discuss in, after the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion by Juanita to table item number 12, approval to hire a police chief until after executive. Second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right, perfect. Real quick, we're going to go into the public input portion, as we normally do before executive. We are pleased to have residents of the community take time to attend these meetings. Individuals wishing to be heard during this time are encouraged to do so. Please remember that public comments are expected to be constructive and devoid of any character assassination. And it could be about any subject, not just police, if you have something to say. Do we have anyone? Any questions? Oh, sorry. It's the public input portion, and if anyone wants to say anything, they definitely can. We just ask that you be constructive and devoid of any character assassination. And it could be of any subject, not just the police department. Nothing? Go ahead.
Since justice is doing one for John.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say that I really appreciate what the town council is really trying to do. We have a lot of work to do, and I think that you all are getting a good, we're trying to get a grip on whatever's going on.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it, and I do.
We all do.
Any other questions? All right. So do I, we have a motion to go into executive.
I'm making a motion during the executive session. Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Ernie to go into executive, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right. As per motion and roll call vote pursuant to New Mexico State Statute 10-15-1, the following matters will be discussed in closed session. Limited personnel matters regarding the hiring of a new Mountaineer chief of police. And if you guys don't mind, I would like to invite Sheriff-elect Rivera into our executive sessions.
No objection.
All right. We are going into executive.